Lieutenant Matthew Dare was hired October 19, 1999 as a firefighter and then was promoted to a paramedic in October of 2002. He was then promoted to a fire lieutenant in December of 2008. His leadership skills, medical knowledge, and fire experience has made him a good fit for his latest promotion in February of 2018 to fire medic lieutenant where he is one of three fire medic lieutenants managing and supervising the EMS portion of A-Shift. Over his 20 years of service, Lieutenant Dare was a member of the Fire Department's Marine Response Team and served eight years on the Engine Committee, helping our department design our fire engines. Additionally, Lieutenant Dare has received a Turner Award for Outstanding Paramedic of the Year in 2008 and was selected as Firefighter of the Year in 2009. Lieutenant Dare has earned an Associate Degree in EMS through St. Petersburg College and holds a Fire Officer II Certification as well as Fire Inspector I Certification. Lieutenant Dare recently celebrated his 19th wedding anniversary and has two growing children at home ages 15 to 13. The City of Clearwater congratulates and thanks Lieutenant Dare on his 20 years of dedicated service to the Fire Department, the City of Clearwater, and its citizens. Lieutenant Matthew Dare.
Watch your...oh, no, don't watch your step.
Yeah, that got me.
Oh, wow. Thanks, Lieutenant. Congratulations on your anniversary, too.
Get your hands full on some other things here, too.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Fantastic. Hey, a public service announcement. We no longer have the thing in front that you trip over, so I don't have to tell you to be careful anymore.
Let's fill the ramps and pick your feet up.
Huh? Well, it's elevated. Okay. Ms. Aiken is going to...has been with us for 25 years from our city attorney. You can stay there or you can come out here like everybody else.
Are you going since you're there?
Yeah. I mean, after all, it's 25 years. That's your silver anniversary, right? Pamela K. Aiken has served as the Clearwater City Attorney since October 1994. Prior to coming to Clearwater, Pam worked in the City Attorney's Office in Tampa for 11 years, with the last six and a half years being the Tampa City Attorney. Pam's experience as a municipal attorney has varied. As City Attorney for Clearwater, Pam is responsible for managing the law office, advising the City Council, the City Manager, Departments of the City, and Boards of the City. She has drafted cable franchises, ordinances, charter revisions, and development agreements. She has also worked with the committee that focused on changing the city's professional manager council government and has even...and has guided seven charter review committees during her 25-year tenure. Pam's advice has always been helpful in explaining proposed changes and the practical effects of them and reflects her deep understanding of the law and her commitment to the City of Clearwater. In 1999, Pam received the Paul S. Buckman Award for Outstanding Municipal Attorney of the Year. She's been recognized by her peers as one of Florida's Legal Elite 11 times and has been a finalist for the Florida League of Cities City Attorney of the Year Award three times. In 2018, Pam was inducted into the Legal Elite Hall of Fame. As City Attorney, Pam has developed a well-educated and hotly skilled team of attorneys and support staff who try to provide outstanding legal services to the City Council and the city. Through that work, the city has prevailed in several high-profile cases, including the landmark case on public records law in the state of Florida, St. Petersburg Times versus the City of Clearwater. In addition, the city has successfully concluded several lawsuits initiated by outdoor advertising companies which allowed for the eventual removal of many billboards from US-19 in Gulf Bay, greatly enhancing the appearance of these two major corridors. With Pam's leadership, the city also defended itself successfully against a Burt Harris Act lawsuit, which is difficult and which resulted in the city recovering a substantial amount of fees. Thank you, Pam Aiken, not only for your 25 years of service to the City of Clearwater, but also for a career that has earned you the respect of your peers, of the council members you have served, and the community that you call home. Congratulations. Should you want to shake your hand?
That's okay. I'll allow a bar.
Our bi-monthly team award for September, October is the Get or Done Team. Stephen Delup Volpe Jr., Eric Jewett, Daniel Casman, and Youssef Touray. Gentlemen.
...grown vegetation, sweep up, and left service to the community and wish to recognize them for a team award. Get or Done Team, September, October 2019, bi-monthly team winners.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Good to see you. Congratulations. Thanks. Thanks to all of you all and congratulations. Now, we're going to welcome some new police officers. We'll have the chief and our city clerks swear them in. Chief?
Good morning, Mayor. Dan Slaughter, Police Chief. I'd like to introduce you to...come on back one more time. Our five new hires, starting from my left to your...to my right is...first is Carissa Costello. She received her Bachelor's Degree in Psychology with a minor in Criminal Justice in Connecticut, and then she earned her Master's Degree in Forensic Mental Health Counseling at John Jay College of Criminal Justice in New York, and she previously worked at the Nassau County Police Department in New York until joining the Clearwater Police Department. Ryan Kennett earned his Bachelor's Degree from the State University of New York Maritime College. He's a decorated United States Navy Reserve serviceman who served as a Lieutenant Commander before resigning his commission in 2015. He then began working with OSG Ship Management in Tampa and New York, and he's worked offshore for drilling contractors until joining the Clearwater Police Department. Nicholas Millillo is a decorated Ranger who served in the United States Army until 2016. He's a graduate of University of South Florida in 2018 with a Bachelor's Degree in Political Science. Roxanna Padilla is an Airman First Class in the United States Air Force Reserve. She was a Community Service Officer and Police Officer with the Greenfield Police Department in Wisconsin, and she received her high school diploma from Nathan Hall High School. Samari Perez is a decorated United States Air Force Staff Sergeant from the Security Forces who has deployed three times. He served in a Nuclear Weapons Security and in the Presidential Airlift Security. Samari attended Lansing Community College and Olivet College in Michigan studying Criminal Justice, and he began with the Clearwater Police Department actually in June...June of 24th. We've had him kind of on ice for a little bit till we got a training program. I'd like to ask that...I also get an opportunity to recognize Corporal Jared Stiff. Jared, if you can wave in the background. He is our recruiter, and he's doing a fabulous job by looking at the backgrounds of these officers, exactly what we're looking for, people with law enforcement experience and military experience. He's really getting us a really great group of people. And with that, Mayor, I'd ask that you direct a clerk to swear them in.
It's called.
And Mayor, could the family come up?
Oh, absolutely.
If anything, I wanted to take pictures. Could you come up behind the dials?
Thanks, Chief.
Come on down. Since everybody's coming that way.
I'm sorry. Just to take pictures.
I swear. I swear that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and Government of the United States, the State of Florida, and the Charter and Laws of the City of Clearwater, that I am duly qualified and have an office under the Charter and Laws of the City of Clearwater, and that I will, well and faithfully, perform the duties of a police officer, and wish to have about the answer.
Congratulations. Welcome. Okay, again, congratulations. Congratulations. So, you're training Michigan for Florida, huh?
Wisconsin for Florida.
Wisconsin, yeah. Okay. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
That's what I was saying. Everybody said it. Congratulations.
Again, to all of you all, welcome and be safe out there protecting us from ourselves sometimes. I'd like to recess the work session and call to order the pension trustees for October the 14th. Are there any additional corrections to the minutes of September the 16th?
Will they be approved?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of September the 16th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. If not, I will close public comment and move on to Agenda Item 4.1.
Hi, good morning. Hi, Shannon Jones, Assistant Director of Human Resources. Request for motion to approve the new hires for acceptance into the pension plan as listed.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.1?
Motion to approve 4.1?
Second.
Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.1? Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.2.
Request to approve the following request of employees. Duan Anderson, Fire Department. Deborah Faison, Parks and Recreation Department. And Michael Ward, Fire Department, for regular pension as provided by Sections 2.416 and 2.424 of the Employees Pension Plan.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.2.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.3.
Request to approve pension plan expenditures for fiscal year 2020 totaling not to exceed $380,000...$380,700 to be presented by Mr. Jay Ravens, Director of Finance.
Good morning, trustees. Jay Ravens, Finance Director. This request is for approval of various administrative expenditures for the plan for fiscal year 2020. This includes all administrative expenditures other than certain professional services contracts that have been brought to the trustees separately, such as the actuary contract and money manager agreements. The recommended expenditures reflect an 8.3% increase over fiscal year 2019 approved expenditures. The increase is primarily due to a $25,000 increase in actuary consulting fees due to current and anticipated pension negotiations with bargaining units during fiscal 2020. Training and travel is a not-to-exceed amount for fiduciary-related pension training and related travel for both trustees and Pension Advisory Committee members. Reimbursements to the General Fund and the Central Insurance Fund are for the cost of oversight and administration of the plan provided by human resources, payroll, and finance employees, along with related operating expenditures. The firm of Clausner Kaufman Jensen and Levinson currently serves as the plan's pension attorneys. The pension attorney amount also includes third-party attorney fees for Pension Advisory Committee disability cases, as well as medical services authorized by the PAC.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.3? Mr. Cunda?
Yes, sir.
Are these expenditures within the guidelines of the budget that we've already passed?
The pension plan does not have a budget. That's the reason we bring these forward. Technically, the trustees have to approve all pension expenditures. For administrative ease, we bring this forward to you to provide a not-to-exceed budget for these specific categories for the fiscal year. You've essentially pre-approved the expenditures up to a not-to-exceed amount.
Any other questions? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.3?
I move to approve Agenda Item 4.3.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Comments, trustees? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.4.
Request to approve new fee schedule with the Pension Plan's investment custodian, Northern Trust, for an annual fixed fee of $95,000 effective October 1st, 2019, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same, presented by Mr. Jay Ravens.
This request is for approval of a new fee schedule with the plan's custodian, Northern Trust. Northern Trust has been the plan's custodian for the safekeeping of the plan's investments since November 2002. During that time, the plan has grown in size and complexity from $400 million managed by 10 money managers to $1.1 billion managed by 21 money managers. The addition of international equities, timber investment partnerships, and infrastructure investments have also significantly increased the complexity of the custodian's duties. Throughout this 17-year time period, Northern Trust has not raised their original fixed fee of $85,000 annually. Northern Trust has now requested a 15% increase in fees from $85,000 to $97,500. Northern Trust has continually and consistently provided an exceptional level of service, and we have benefited from an excellent working relationship. Staff recommends approval of the requested fee increase, which equates to less than 1% annually over the 17-year period of significant growth.
Any questions of staff on 4.4?
Move approval of...
Hold on. You have two different figures here. You have $85,000 and then $87,000 on the work sheet.
You mean $95 and $97.5?
Yes, $97.5. No, no, you say Northern Trust is seeking a 14.7 increase in their annual fixed fee from $87,000 to $97.5, and then on a previous paragraph, you have it listed as $85,000?
The $87 is a typo. I apologize.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Yeah, okay, so it's $85?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.4? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.4.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. Comments, trustees? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.4.
Request to approve new fee schedule with the Pension Plan's investment custodian, Northern Trust, for an annual fixed fee of $95,000 effective October 1st, 2019, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute the same, presented by Mr. Jay Ravens.
This request is for approval of a new fee schedule with the plan's custodian, Northern Trust. Northern Trust has been the plan's custodian for the safekeeping of the plan's investments since November 2002. During that time, the plan has grown in size and complexity from $400 million managed by 10 money managers to $1.1 billion managed by 21 money managers. The addition of international equities, timber investment partnerships, and infrastructure investments have also significantly increased the complexity of the custodian's duties. Throughout this 17-year time period, Northern Trust has not raised their original fixed fee of $85,000 annually. Northern Trust has now requested a 15% increase in fees from $85,000 to $97,500. Northern Trust has continually and consistently provided an exceptional level of service, and we have benefited from an excellent working relationship. Staff recommends approval of the requested fee increase, which equates to less than 1% annually over the 17-year period of significant growth.
Any questions of staff on 4.4?
Move approval of...
You have two different figures here. You have $85,000 and then $87,000 on the work sheet.
You mean $95 and $97.5?
Yes, $97.5. No, no, you say Northern Trust is seeking a 14.7 increase in their annual fixed fee from $87,000 to $97.5, and then on a previous paragraph, you have it listed as $85,000?
The $87 is a typo. I apologize.
Okay, okay. Just wanted to make sure. Yeah, okay, so it's $85?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.4? Motion?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.4.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.4. Comments, trustees? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Any other business for the trustees? Okay. We will adjourn the pension trustees for October the 14th and call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting of October the 14th. Are there any minutes or any corrections or additions to the minutes of September the 16th?
Move to approve the minutes?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of September the 16th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously. Anybody from the public wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda for the pension trustees?
CRA.
Oh, CRA.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Bill Johnson. I did fill out a card. I'd just like to give you a shout-out to the trustees of the CRA and the staff of the CRA for the great town hall conversation that occurred last Friday night entitled "Our Perspectives, Our Culture, Our Community," was primarily a panel discussion group of four individuals talking about diversity and some of the challenges of different cultures. It was a wonderful meeting, great concept to have those kind of town hall meetings at the Second Century Studio. Thank you very much.
Anybody else from the public wishing to speak to an item not on the agenda? If not, we will close public comment and move forward to Agenda Item 4.1.
Yes, approve the proposed 2020 Community Redevelopment Agency Meeting Schedule and adopt CRA Resolution 19-02, and this is our meeting...proposed meeting schedule for 2020.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.1? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.1?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.1?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.1. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.2.
I have a resolution for that, Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Aiken?
Resolution number 19-02, a resolution of the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Clearwater, Florida, adopting the CRA 2020 meeting schedule, providing an effective date.
Move approval of Resolution 19-02.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt CRA Resolution 19-02. Comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.2.
Yes, approve a contract for the sale of surplus property owned by the City of Clearwater located at 610 Franklin Street to the Clearwater Community Redevelopment Agency with a purchase price of $1,006,000, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. So, this item, you heard wearing your hat as City Council on October 3rd and approved the sale to the CRA, so this is to complete that. There's an appraised value, two appraisals ranging from $1.5 to $2 million, and as we said, the CRA wishes to purchase this property for a little over $1 million. Our intent is to redevelop it as housing, which I'll go into in the next item, the specifics on that.
Any questions of staff on Agenda Item 4.2? Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.2?
I move to approve Agenda Item 4.2.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.2. Comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.3.
Yes, so... Thank you. So, approve an agreement for the sale and development of the property located at 610 Franklin Street to Blue Sky Communities LLC for the purposes identified in Request for Proposals 09...is that the right one? Yeah, 09-19, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. So, what you are looking at here is an 81-unit apartment complex with some office on the ground floor and a two-story parking garage that will be in the back, and this was the successful...this was the winning bid that we received out of three for an RFP for a tax credit housing project on this site. To give you a little bit of background, right, the city wanted to demolish Fire Station 45 probably almost a year ago or a little over, and then at the time, council said we should consider adaptive reuse, so the CRA put out a call for letters of interest for adaptive reuse on the site. We had a building study that had been done, so it's going to cost it...for the current fire station, it would be at least $1 million to rehab that facility. So, the LOI was out there for several months. We received one proposal, which was for a nonprofit arts center, and again, we were looking for adaptive reuse for profit commercial use, so that wasn't the right fit. Great idea, not the right fit for our downtown strategy. And as we've gone through a couple of different market studies, we put out RFPs looking for market rate housing. We know that we have a little bit more work to do in order to attract market rate development. We need Apex 1100 to be fully occupied as the Nolan is, so we can establish what those rental rates are per square foot. We also need to continue to up our foot traffic, right? Those are going to be two key factors for us to really attract market rate development. So, knowing that we didn't really have retail restaurant for-profit interests, we didn't really have market rate interest, the opportunity came about to do a tax credit project. And the reason why these projects are so successful is that if you obtain the tax credits, in this case, and this is a $22 million development, they will receive $17 million in subsidy, right, in order to build this by selling off those tax credits. So, for us, with the downtown strategies that we have outlined here of making use of state and federal opportunities to build workforce housing, with our 18-month strategy for the CRA, again, of building apartment housing to up that foot traffic, this was the right fit for us. So, the first step is approving of the development agreement, and then Blue Sky Communities will submit their tax credit application, and then we will know in March if they have received the tax credits. If they do not receive the tax credits, the CRA will still retain ownership of the property and will be able to go out to bid again, or we have the option of sticking with this plan and trying again in another year for the tax credit project. Blue Sky Communities has proposed to purchase the property for $2 million, right, and if you...if you recall, we're buying it for $1,600,000. So, with that excess money, we'll be coming back to you to talk about how we would use that. There's a couple of different options on the table. One will be participating in the local government contribution of the $747,000 loan, so that's part of it. We could look at building additional structured parking if we decide that's what we'd like to do. We could look at enhancing the project in some way, whether that would be adding units or, you know, adding more to the architectural quality, although I think it's pretty beautiful right now as it is. So, we will be coming back in the future, asking your permission, getting...making recommendations for what to do with the additional funding that we received from the sale of this project. I think just two more things that we'd like to emphasize, and then if you have more questions, I have Sean Wilson, President of Blue Sky Communities here, obviously our attorney, Michael Fueno, and then Chuck Lane from Housing. This proposal stood out because it is truly mixed income, right? It's not serving just one category. There's three categories. So, the split of units is across 30% area median income, 60%, and 80% area median income. And if you look at an 80% area median income, you're looking at someone who makes around $45,000, $50,000 a year. So, we know that this is sorely missing in our rental market. You know, this would someone imagine, a single parent who works at the checkout line at Publix, right, or a manager at one of our hotel properties on the beach, or really anyone who works in the service industry would be eligible to live in this unit. So, I think...I think that's very important, that there's a mix of income. I also think the design is...it's meeting all of our new downtown design guidelines, that they're going to build bicycle parking. They're attempting to save the trees, right, that they have a pedestrian orientation and focus, and they're absolutely maxing out the density. So, these are all things that we're looking for. These are all adopted community goals and part of our strategy. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we recommend your approval of this development agreement.
Ms. Dobbins?
The design is great for tax credit. How many units is it? Eighty-two?
Eighty...eighty-one.
Eighty-one units. So, as our CRA Director, how do you think the workforce people that are going to be renting these places will help stimulate our downtown? Will that be a good thing?
I think it's going to be a great thing, and I think when you first hear workforce or low income, you think of people who have no money, right? And really, with the case is that they're cost burdened because they're paying more than 30% of their income towards housing. So, today, if I'm spending half of my paycheck on housing, and then I can move into a place where I'm only spending 30% of my paycheck on housing, then that frees up, right, 20 more percent of...which becomes discretionary funding, right, that they would be able to spend in downtown, right? Hopefully, that would be the idea. They might choose to save money, but we're taking people who are cost burdened now and giving them an opportunity to not spend more than 30% of their income on housing.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Reassure us, the reservation I had initially was about the 50 years. Why do we have to lock ourselves into the 50 years?
So, the 50-year requirement for this property to remain affordable is a requirement of the tax credit project, and the reason being is that typically, you're trying to place workforce housing into very hot housing markets, right? So, what a developer would normally do is they say, "Oh, I'm going to get this tax credit. I'm going to build this amazing product. In two years from now, I'm going to flip it, right? I'm going to sell it, and it's not going to be affordable anymore. I'm going to change it to market rate." So, the restriction is on there, so you know, if my public tax dollars went for workforce housing, it's going to stay workforce housing. And I know that right now, we're in a challenged market, and it's hard to see, but as someone who's lived through a flip in markets, once our market becomes attractive for market rate development... And I know that right now, we're in a challenged market, and it's hard to see, but as someone who's lived through a flip in markets, once our market becomes attractive for market rate development, it's going to move faster than you could ever imagine possible, and it will be very challenging to get an affordable product downtown.
And help me out, we hear a lot about needing affordable housing, and this is going, whether it's for the service and hospitality industry, or even, let's say, Morton Plant, or would some of the people there qualify for this?
Absolutely. So you're looking at a range of incomes from $20,000 to about $55,000, and that's measured for households that have up to four people, right? So again, this is not 100% subsidized, you know, this is affordable. So you have to be working, you have to meet certain income thresholds in order to qualify to live in this building, and it's ongoing. But remember, our income shifted, right? Like, maybe a couple of years ago, you'd think someone making $40,000, like, wow, that's a great salary, right? You should be able to afford to live in most places. That's just not, that's not the case anymore. Someone making $30,000, a family of three or a family of four, they have almost no product to choose from that will cost 30% or less of their income.
Okay. And then my last question pertains to the design?
Yes.
That is what we're going to have when the building is completed?
So the development agreement includes this proposal. So when we're reviewing the plans and going to permitting, this is what we would expect to see. The style of design, these kind of materials, right, with the plazas that they've recommended.
Okay. I know we had approved, council, not as the CRA, we had approved another project, and while it was under construction, we got some feedback from residents saying, well, look, you know, they haven't put the landscaping in that they promised, and yet the project was still under construction. Correct me if I'm wrong, but landscaping is the last thing that's going to be done?
Landscaping is always the last thing that will go in. Remember, you have to get your irrigation in underneath, and you don't want to put on plants until you're done with heavy things that could end up on top of this.
I just wanted to make sure that I was correct, you know? And I don't want anybody to say, well, look, you know, they tore down, you know, and look, they haven't put up the trees yet. Well, we haven't put up the trees because that's going to be the last thing that's going to be done.
That's exactly right.
All right, thank you. Anybody from the public to speak to Agenda Item 4.3?
Move approval of Agenda Item 4.3?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve Agenda Item 4.3. Any comments, council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries unanimously Agenda Item 4.4.
Yes, I'd like to invite up Rosemary Demore, the CRA's Public Relations and Programs Manager. I've asked her today to take a deep dive into our first focus area, right, which is create and share positive stories, right? So to talk a little bit about the CRA's strategy, our editorial strategy, and how we're tackling the perception, right, of downtown and that perception issue. Just two more things before she starts. We were recently at a communications conference in Austin last week, and for communications professionals who work for foundations and nonprofits, a lot of them on tough issues, right? Say, you know, equality, restoration of felons' rights, smoking secession campaigns. And one thing that we know is even though we are becoming more politically polarized as a country, even though we're trapped in these information bubbles and echo chambers, that still the majority of people are in the middle. They are willing to listen, and they are willing to change their mind if we can have a conversation where we find common values. So part of the work that what you're doing, and what you'll hear about, is we've got to find those common values that everyone can share around connecting to downtown, celebrating downtown, feeling welcome in downtown. Lastly, I'll say we're just very fortunate to have Rosemary. She is an expert in this field. Her master's thesis was on social media and social movements, so I'm just, I'm very happy that she's part of our team, and she'll do her presentation. We're happy to take any questions throughout and afterwards.
Thank you, Amanda. It's good to have that hype before we start our presentation. Thank you. So as Amanda said, we are going to give you a high-level overview of our marketing, advertising, and editorial strategy so far this year and how we have and our plan looking forward. And it's important to note that at the beginning of this year, we spent a lot of time asking ourselves how we might better serve residents of downtown through the content that we create, right? And establish Clearwater in the national conversation on the future of cities. And our priorities in our storytelling for 2019 and 2020 are very much tied to our 18-month strategy. For those who need a refresher, we're talking about perception shift and creating and sharing authentic, positive stories about downtown, beginning construction on Imagine Clearwater, permitting 600 housing units, and attracting $100 million of private investment. So as we talk about this idea of perception shift, we need to understand where we are and where we want to go. So how is it that we want people to see downtown? And in our exercises at the beginning of the year, we came up with six messages that we definitely want people to take away when they think about downtown Clearwater. And that is that we're moving from vacant to vibrant, from quiet to lively, from a place that has one type of event to a variety of events, from not having many arts at all to being arts-infused, from a rather exclusive place to a welcoming place, and moving from disconnected to connected. And that's connecting to the broader city, but also connecting to us and the CRA and our staff. And it's important to note that this is a long game, right? The challenges facing downtown didn't happen overnight, and so neither will the solutions. But communication and engagement will play a really crucial role in helping the CRA reach its goals, and I think any city's goals, quite frankly. And so we think that what we're creating here is a strategy that can be replicated nationally. Before I get into our, some of our, a deep dive into our tactics, I'll try not to go on a tirade about today's media environment, because it's a very challenging place to be. And if we're going to play this long game, we need to understand the rules that we're playing in, right? The media environment has shifted drastically in the last 20 years and even in the last five years, and so our tactics need to adjust as well. We simply can't rely on other people to tell our story, and we need to meet audiences where they are. And so we identified a few opportunities, a few challenges this year. Number one was creating an editorial strategy, and that's how we communicate our goals and what content we create to reach our audiences. And then thinking about that context and the broader social web, social web world that we live in, the Wild West days of social media, which is seven years ago, right? It was when organic content, meaning content you didn't have to pay to reach audiences, that was king. Anybody could go viral, anybody could be heard. And it's how social movements like the Arab Spring happened, which turned social media companies into community organizing platforms. But the tragic story today is that most social media is pay-to-play, and those dollars have to be allocated super strategically if we're going to reach our audiences. And social media companies are changing the rules on us on an almost daily basis. So again, we have to be constantly vigilant and still get our content in front of audiences for relatively little investment. A $100 Facebook ad today will get you in front of a few thousand people. It used to get you in front of 100,000 people. And so again, thinking about the broader web, the Googles, the Facebooks, the Youtubes of the world, these entities are the gatekeepers of the information that you receive, and they're often algorithmically determined, right? Which means that your behavior, my behavior, the things we're looking at and clicking on today influence not just what I see today, but what I'll see in the future. And that's why this conversation on perception shift is so important. People are often reinforcing their own beliefs by what they click on and what they see online. And so when we are talking about people being led to conclusions by a predetermined algorithm, we can't expect people, again, to just find us, right? We have to meet people where they are and work even harder to cut through that noise, which is why a tactic like improving our Google search results is a really important thing for us in downtown. With the media, we see two distinct opportunities. Number one in advertising, digital and print can reach people like never before. And then second, seeing how we're actually talked about and mentioned in the media. There are free platforms that measure this, things like Google Alerts can tell you when your keyword or phrase is mentioned on the web. But then there are also larger-scale platforms that can do the heavy lifting for us and kind of sift through and catalog these media mentions, and then give us an additional deeper dive and tell us, what's the sentiment behind these articles? Are they positive? Are they negative? Are they neutral? And luckily, our public communications team already uses a platform like this, and so we've been able to piggyback off of them and get a keener understanding of how we're being discussed in the media. And then finally, developing marketing materials. We didn't have a lot before we started this year in terms of, we had a branding guide that was launched when our website was launched a few years ago, but it's, in terms of a cohesive strategy in developing these materials, we didn't have that before 2019, so it's something that we've been working on. And so thinking about the CRA's goals here, we do want to increase investment in downtown, but we also want to help people increase their attachment to and their pride in downtown, right? And there are very distinct audiences for those two goals, both investors and then also residents and visitors. And I would say also, cities of similar sizes. So what can we learn from a city like Gary, Indiana, that's also faced similar challenges to us? What lessons learned are there to offer? And what lessons can we provide to the country at large? And so where do we begin with all of this? Knowing that our programming and messaging are tied together, we needed to develop this editorial strategy to focus on our efforts. And those six messages that I mentioned before, from vacant to vibrant, from quiet to lively, that's our guiding star. Everything we do has to hit one of those six messages, if not more. And now that we know what we want people to think, where do we reach them? Thinking about our core channels, obviously, our website, downtownclearwater.com, social media, predominantly Instagram and Facebook, our email platform, traditional media, advertising in digital and print, and then thinking about also strategic partners that we can work with to spread this message, be it city departments or regional organizations and entities. And knowing what we want to say, where we want to say it, how do we refine it even further? We've identified and spent a lot of time at the beginning of the year coming up with three key stories that we want folks to take away. These aren't the only stories that we're telling of downtown, but these are three kind of larger buckets that we can fit a lot of content into. And we think that these things demonstrate that the perception that there's not a lot happening in downtown just isn't true, right? And it's the CRA's role and responsibility to either act as a catalyst through our programming or to help connect the dots for folks, for things that we're not directly involved in but know benefit the community at large. And so our first story is on business and merchant success stories. We had some key examples this year, the opening of the Apex 1100 apartment complex, getting to the live in that live-work-play model, the opening of The Ring, which is the region's first co-working space focused on wellness. It's the first in the region, but it's only second in the world, which is a pretty big storyline. And then obviously, No Before, which is headquartered in downtown, reached unicorn status this year, and it's the only unicorn in Tampa Bay. It's pretty great. An inclusive and vibrant public spaces, we actually had a lot of appetite for this this year. In our holiday extravaganza at the end of December last year, and happening again this December, we've had a number of activities that activate all, that activate downtown. One of the key ones that's featured in a photo here is our outdoor movie nights, which we had more than 100 people show up on a Sunday evening in downtown Clearwater to watch a movie outdoors, which was pretty exciting for the first time that we tried this. Our partnership with the planning department to put together a pop-up park and community mural for the PSTA's Spring Break Jolly Charlie program. You can see a couple of photos of people engaging in that public space and realizing they can have playful and engaging public spaces that are creative. And then finally, the Urban Conga, their exhibition Oscillation in June of this year was in Station Square Park, and it has actually led to further partnership with them for November of this year. They'll be at Second Century Studios for a three-week exhibition on playable cities, providing opportunities for the public and city staff to figure out how we can make our public spaces more creative, more engaging, and above all, fun. And finally, thinking about the role of arts and culture in downtown revitalization. Our mural program completed in January of this year. Our Sculptures 360 program is all throughout downtown. And then we had a wonderful showcase in June of this year, which looked at groups that are working in the intersection of art and technology. And that actually led to a partnership with us with USF's Access 3D Lab, and they're going to be producing an augmented reality installation on one of the murals, the Community mural on the Garden Avenue Garage. But our crown jewel of arts and culture this year was definitely the Dreams of Dali exhibit at Second Century Studios, and that was from January to June, in case anyone forgot. But it was a first for the region, first time the Dali Museum had ever done an exhibit like this, and increased attendance at Second Century Studios by over 400% this year. And we know that it resonated with the community for a variety of reasons, but most recently because we won the Creative Loafings Best of the Bay 2019 Award for Reader's Choice. And the Reader's Choice aspect here is really important because it means that our community voted on it. And the fact that we received this award, which is a first for the CRA, was pretty So thinking about 2019 and looking forward to 2020, 2019 was a big building blocks year. We didn't know what we were tracking, and we didn't know who we were reaching, and now we do. Metrics reporting was really key for us this year, not only our web traffic, but also social media, our email platforms, and advertising platforms. Again, how are we allocating our dollars super strategically? You can see a snapshot of our web metrics here for our referral traffic on our website from August and July of this year. And you see that blue portion of the pie chart is organic search, and that's the people who are using Google, and maybe like the 20 people who are using Bing, and they can tell you that they're searching the downtown Clearwater, or Clearwater is the reference there. And that goes to show you how important that audience is for us of organic search and why we need to appear at the top. And so now that we have this metrics reporting, which I produce on a monthly basis, we can actively adjust our strategy based on the data that we get. And speaking of our website, we had significant updates this year, and you can see our Instagram profile at the end there with a great photo of the mayor from last week. But downtownclearwater.com had significant updates. Number one, ADA compliance. It's important to us that we meet the city's threshold for ADA compliance. We were at the bare minimum at about 60% compliance. We've moved it up to 80% this year. So our web team spent a significant amount of time, and we want to make sure that everybody has access to this site, which is why, again, making it more mobile-friendly, you don't just have to have a desktop or user desktop in order to have a good user experience on downtownclearwater.com. We also have improved calendar and community submissions on our site, and this essentially acts as free advertising for our merchants in downtown. Our community calendar can be submitted, anyone can submit to our community calendar, provide business deals, updates, events, and we think that that's a great resource that's available to folks. And finally, before this year, you didn't know who worked at the CRA. You had no access to staff, and you didn't know how to reach them. And so if you wanted to work with the CRA, you had to know someone at the CRA before 2019. So we think that that's pretty important, that you're able to access us and see not just who the staff are at the CRA, but also specific projects that we work on, so you can reach the right person for the project that you're working on in the community. Our email platform is a great way to engage with folks who are already engaged. They've given us their precious resource of their email address, and we take that very seriously. We've grown our subscribers by over 15% this year and have been able to segment our lists based on people's interests. People who signed up during the Dreams of Dali exhibit, for instance, can also get now, get updates on the augmented reality project that we're doing, because if you're interested in virtual reality, you might also be interested in augmented reality. And our monthly newsletter has an open rate of 26.3% and click-through rate of 5.9%, which on its face might not look great, but looking at the statistics at MailChimp, which is our platform, the average open rate is around 17%, and average click-through rate is a little over 1%. So we're exceeding those expectations set by the platform. And then finally, we've expanded our advertising this year, thinking about how we might reach new audiences in new ways and new places, and what local and regional publications are actually going to help us reach our goals. We were in the inaugural Invest Tampa Bay magazine this year with a full-page ad, and have actually doubled down on that for next year, doing a full-page ad and then also a seven-page spread on investment opportunities in downtown Clearwater, which, again, reaches a key target audience for us. We've also expanded advertising in publications like Creative Loafing and the Jolly Charlie, meeting people again in different points in the region and community that we think will then come to our website and learn about the CRA. And an important component in this this year, we didn't have stock photos, we didn't have stock footage, and we didn't have canned messaging that we could use for advertising opportunities as they came up. We were fairly reactionary. Now we have these things. We invested a lot of time in making sure that we have appropriate images, appropriate messaging to go with new ads as they come up, so we can be more proactive in the future. And then thinking about social media, obviously, again, we're tracking who we're reaching, what we're posting, and how far it's going. We also wanted to create a few fun and engaging moments for folks on social media this year, and had two really great campaigns. And want to give a huge shout-out to Ally Chandler and Emily Johnson in the Public Communications Department for their design work. They are really spectacular, and you can see some of the results here. We came up with an Instagram gift campaign, which you can use in your Instagram stories. That's also available on giphy.com. This is just a sampling of three that we have on Giphy. We have 15 in all, and I believe these have been viewed over a million times since the launch in May of this year. Again, just creating kind of fun moments about downtown, and the great thing is that while this was piloted and launched in downtown, it can apply to the whole city. Every neighborhood could develop their own gifts, let's say, or you could develop specific ones for the beach, or the aquarium, or specific events like Clearwater Jazz. And then the second fun campaign that we did this year was Facebook profile photo frames. And I believe in getting people's consent to use data, their data from Facebook, and to show you that we don't just talk the talk, we walk the walk at the CRA. Here's an example of the two Facebook profile frames that we came up with this year, featuring Amanda's profile and my own profile. It's also just a lovely photo of me, and I like to make sure that people see it. So this is an example of like a very simple tactic that you can use to create that kind of clickable civic pride, right? This is a low-cost and low-risk test that we can do to see how people can use platforms like this. And I hope to see everybody up here changing their Facebook profile frames this week. And so that's just an example of some of the things that we're thinking about this year. And moving forward to 2020, obviously, we're expanding our media partnerships and advertising, again doubling down on Invest Tampa Bay, exploring partnerships with the Tampa Bay Times Digital Team. And then in the interest of not reinventing the wheel, we're working with departments that have similar goals or similar audiences to what we're looking for. And again, another shout-out to Adra Aja from the Economic Development Department. She's been a fantastic partner in some of this with the 83 Degrees Media Contract that we have. They're developing editorial content focused on downtown. And then Tampa Bay is Awesome, which will use creative and fun, engaging social media posts for their hundreds of thousands of followers in the area. And then other things that we're thinking about, how might we use op-eds to talk about what's happening in downtown, tie it to our 18-month strategy? And then how might, again, might we place downtown Clearwater in the national conversation on the future of cities through national trade publications, getting featured in Urban Land Institute, or platforms like CityLab, which again focus on future of cities? So that was a high-level and hopefully quick overview of what we're working on with marketing and advertising and editorial. I'm happy to take any questions you might have.
Any questions, staff?
They're not going to put our pictures up as trustees?
I'm not going to let you off that easy. Okay? First off, thanks for all the work that y'all are doing. But it troubles me a little bit, because this is all the work that we're doing, our staff is doing. We have a downtown partnership. We have a downtown development board, and not once did I hear you mention that they're working with us on any of these things. And so that leads me to believe that they're not.
Well, I think there are definitely opportunities for us to work with the DDB and Clearwater Downtown Partnership as well. With the DDB, we had the great opportunity of working with USF's Access 3D Lab. That's actually funding through the DDB that we've been able to put this together. And I think that they'll be strategic partners for us as we think of other opportunities through events or campaigns like this. But yeah, that's definitely.
But number one, on your list of things to do, downtown Clearwater is moving from vacant to vibrant. And we know that there's an awful lot of property that the city of Clearwater does not control in the downtown. And what are these other, I mean, that makes your job a whole lot more difficult, because you don't, we, the city, the CRA, doesn't control this property. And these other organizations and all are supposed to be helping us promote the downtown. And yet, I didn't hear you mention them one time.
Well, there are a few, there's another opportunity that the DDB is funding this year, which is two viral video campaigns. One is with residents that might be, that might share authentic and creative stories about downtown, 60-second videos that can be shared on social media, and then a larger-scale video campaign that'll work with a professional video production company.
I'm not going to push this, okay? Because it's not a question that you can answer, and it's not fair. But as we go forward, these other, I mean, again, our hands are tied, correct? We don't, we don't control the property. And for them to think, and for the community to think that we can change it from vacant to vibrant, from quiet to lively, just because we're using social media extensively and trying to promote ourselves, we need help. And I think that that's where I'm so sort of frustrated in what y'all are trying to do, because everybody, you know, well, the city's not doing anything. Well, it appears that we're doing an awful lot, but we just can't control the outcome.
All right, Mayor, I'll speak a little bit to that. I think because the perception, right, the perception of vacant, that there's nothing going on, right? That's where we're starting now, where actually there are businesses here, and there are things that are going on. So this is our kind of first baby step to say, recognize what is here. And then as you're describing, there's no way we move forward without other partners. And part of what this, the social media strategy and editorial does, it starts to generate more talk about what's happening and start to up that, that interest and perhaps peer pressure, right, of, hey, you know, this is successful, this is going on, maybe you should take other actions, property owner, and you should do some other things and fill those spaces. And I, and I think you are correct. I mean, since the CRA does staff the DDB, right, there's, they are being supportive in their funding to shift to some more marketing and advertising for our other downtown organizations, with the exception of the Chamber of Commerce, they're all volunteers, right? They do not have paid staff. And that, that capacity, the capacity of our downtown organizations is a big concern, right, for us of how are we going to accomplish more if we don't have, you know, other strong organizations to partner with?
We're taking the right step, I think, of trying to bring people downtown with the agreement that we just signed, you know, for the apartment complex, you know? I mean, that's something that we're doing. But I sure would like, you know, the next time y'all are here, I sure would like to hear that some of these partners and these property owners who own the property, who control the property, have done something to show that, you know, they also are wanting to help us out and not just sit on property forever and ever.
Well, I think, again, our role can be either catalyst or connector, right? And so either our programming is going to help inspire folks, or we can serve as a connector to say, these are all the things that are happening in downtown, not just through us, but through other folks as well. And we'll certainly do a better job of that as we move forward.
Mayor?
Sir?
Mr. Horne. You know, to your earlier points, I think my perspective is that part of what is at the core of why we may not necessarily have the participation that we were kind of expecting from some of our partners is that I'm not convinced that we are in complete alignment. We can only do what we can control, but if the other partners, you know, have a fundamental disagreement with what we're doing and how we're doing it, then that presents a barrier for them to want to be engaged with us in doing some of the things that we're trying to do. I think going forward, what we probably should do at this point, you know, since we've laid all this out, is to have a very direct conversation with those partners to find out where are the alignment gaps. Now, you know, one of the things that I've faced the whole time I've been here is that if the partner fundamentally believes they don't agree with us, and we don't agree with them, then there isn't going to be the engagement. And that's why we have continued to try and search for ways to try and move the needle. I think telling our story, being proud of what we're doing, recognizing what we can't control, in my view, is the long-term strategy. May take us a billion years, but I think we'll get there.
Well, and staff is doing a great job on that. But these other groups are out there criticizing us because we're not doing anything. And my response back is, well, what have you done? You know? And I think the answer, the honest answer is that they haven't done anything but criticize. And they make it a whole lot difficult for our staff to continue to do the work that it's trying to do to benefit the entire community.
Our approach is to stay positive in everything that we do. And because, you know, we just, we can't, we can't get any, any utility, you know, out of, you know, hitting them across the ground.
Mr. Condon. I'd like to mention that there are a number of individual businesses that are doing a lot and have helped the downtown a lot. Some of the organizations are slow, and some of the owners of the properties are extremely slow. But some of the, some of the actual businesses have done quite a bit to make the downtown vibrant in their own grounds. But they are limited because they are themselves.
You know, I see that the other groups do contribute to our downtown, and they do it in different ways. You know, being here, we're always going to be criticized one way or another. But kind of what the city manager says, sometimes they're not always in alignment. But what they do, I mean, we don't recognize a lot of things they do. And, I mean, now we've got the chambers coming together, that they, they do an awful lot for the community. The DDB, I mean, I served as ex-official on that. I know that they're devoted to getting things done. So I think staying positive is always a good thing. And we will all come together with maybe common goals, and they'll be there to help, you know, when we, when we get there. So it is difficult for everybody right now downtown. That's why, that's why we do have so many other groups that are really trying to figure out what, what it is we need to do. So I appreciate what you showed us today. I think that's a good, good direction.
Thank you. Any other business for the CRA?
No, just two updates. I did want to let you know that we will not be able to complete negotiations with Hop Daddy slash Salty Bowl Brewing. We were just unable to reach a final agreement. One sticking point was that they wanted to be automatically allowed a larger, expanded of uses than what the proposal, their proposal initially proposed. So, you know, we'll be circling back with you on next steps for that property. And that the Nolan.
Okay, hold on. Just to refresh for people who may be listening and not familiar with what you're talking about, expand a little bit about who this group is.
Correct. So this was the summer we'd come to you with a recommended redevelopment proposal for 115 South MLK, which is the white warehouse in the adjoining vacant lot, to be redeveloped as a brew pub, microbrewery, or restaurant. And so we were off, the CRA was authorized to, you know, start with negotiations to finalize that, and just letting you know that we will, we will not be able to complete negotiations on that. Yes.
Mr. Horne.
How are we doing with the other incentive program guideline? I mean, I know that August or October the first was a deadline. Are we extending for a couple of them? Would you talk about that?
So Tequila's was able to meet the deadline. They have received a temporary CO. So they, they have that which qualifies them, and they're working towards their opening date very soon. And then the Nolan, NM Residential, who owns the Nolan, submitted full applications for three, for the three sites that they were pre-qualified for, their three spaces. So I'll be bringing that to you in various pieces in November and December. But they're looking to do a smaller food hall in the largest space, a self-serve beer and wine place, and then a coffee house. And this is typical for them and other developments. They have run their own businesses, so they are the owner and they will serve as the tenant. They'll set up separate businesses and operate those and do the build-out of those spaces. So we will have three grant requests. They've been pre-qualified, and they will be bringing forward those three. We'll all be bringing them forward in the next couple of months.
Okay, and how's Black Brick doing?
And Black Brick, I have no updates.
You were going to say something about the Nolan, or did you?
That was the Nolan, that, those three grants. And finally, I'll just say that we're going to trademark clickable civic pride as we continue to work through that. And with this presentation, I know that our budget shifted a lot this year to spend more money on marketing and advertising. I just want to reassure you that we're doing that with targets, with purpose, and with data to make sure we're doing that effectively. So I just want to, any more information you need, happy to provide it.
Okay. Thank you very much. We will adjourn the CRA and reconvene the work session for October the 14th, Agenda Item 4.1.
3.1?
3.1, I'm sorry.
Support the Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot and adopt Resolution 19-28. Ms. Boil.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Sheridan Boyle, Sustainability Coordinator for the City of Clearwater. I'm here today with Ray Bichard of Blue Green Connections, a local nonprofit devoted to spreading awareness of our local marine ecosystems. This morning, we will introduce the new Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot that was recently created by Mission Blue, an organization founded by world-renowned marine biologist Dr. Sylvia Earle, who's actually a native to Dunedin. Ray and his team of Vicky Love and Tracy Tippin were responsible for nominating the Gulf Coast Hope Spot, and he's here to provide information on the designation and how it will benefit the region and our city. After his presentation, I would like to elaborate on how the designation supports our city's vision and discuss a resolution in support of the Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spots. So with that, I would ask Ray to come up, and we will go through a presentation, and you'll just click here.
Okay, good. Just to start with, to give you a little background on me, I have very deep roots here in Clearwater, as well as the county. My great-great-grandfather, Daniel McMullin, and his brother James built the oldest dwelling in Pinellas County, which was originally built at Bayview, now moved to Heritage Village. I was born at Morton Plant. My grandfather rode horseback with guns to protect the building of our first courthouse in Clearwater so that we would become the county seat. That said, I love Clearwater. And what are we talking about, the Hope Spot now?
Yeah.
Would you like to start on this page?
Yes, and you'll just click as you go through.
Click here?
Mm-hmm.
What is a Hope Spot? Okay, Hope Spots were introduced in 2009 by Dr. Sylvia Earle as special places critical to the health of the ocean. As Sheridan mentioned, Dr. Earle grew up in Dunedin and became one of the world's leading oceanographers. These special places have unique ecological features, which our Gulf of Mexico has along the Florida Gulf Coast. We'll describe those later. A diversity of rare and threatened species. We have over 100 endangered species that live in the Gulf of Mexico. We have several critically endangered species. We also have spawning and nursery areas that are critical to the, the health of the ocean and all of its life. Historical and cultural and spiritual values, we can think of Tarpon Springs for this. The economic importance to our community, which all of the west coast of Florida thrives on tourism, and our economic development is mostly tied to the health of the water that we enjoy for our vacations and other people come here to enjoy. Hope Spots are nominated by individuals, groups, or communities and approved by the Mission Blue Council. The Mission Blue Council is made up by members of the IUNC, International Union of Natural, Conservation of Nature, IUCN. What Hope Spots are not, another click, okay. Hope Spots are not a legal designation. Hope Spots are not a regulatory entity. We do not create laws, nor do we lobby for laws. FWC handles that, and Florida has a great system in place for regulating fishing and so forth like that. We don't intervene in any of that. Hope Spots do not have rules or restrictions. We are here mostly to inform the public of what's going on, engage the public. We are working with big entities like Moat Marine, Florida Aquarium, Tampa Bay Estuary Program, who have all the research and support that is needed to give the information that's necessary to create the legislation that helps provide our protection. Hope Spots promote sustainable use of our precious waters. The Hope Spot is a means to educate and share information and support research. So what's happening locally? Here's a, not local, but this is, the Hope Spots around the world. And you can see there's over 120. We just became the 120th Hope Spot that was designated. We'll move on to the local. This was designated in August of 2019. It extends from Apalachicola Bay to 10,000 Island, which is just south of Marco Island. Apalachicola Bay was chosen because of the problems with the oysters. I worked on a film many years ago. Sorry for my beard, but I'm serious and I have to wear this. Many years ago, I worked in Apalachicola, and we worked with a guy named Kendall Schelis, whose great-great-grandfather planted the original seeds for the Apalachicola oyster that became world-famous. And I enjoyed these my entire life. I talked to Kendall a few weeks ago. He has not had a harvest in three years. And there's a lot of work being done there with FSU's Office of Research. They have several grants in place to do work in the bay to figure out what's going wrong and help provide restoration of these oysters. It was nominated by Blue Green Connections, along with a diverse coalition of supporters, including the City of Dunedin, Pinellas County Commissioners, Tampa Bay Estuary Program, Florida Aquarium, Moat Marine Laboratory and Aquarium, and many others. We have dozens and dozens of businesses in the Clearwater area, and all up and down Pinellas County, and up and down the state of Florida, as well as many individuals, over 140 individuals. So this gives a little bit more of the area that we're talking about. It's from Apalachicola Bay down to 10,000 Island, up to 200 miles offshore, which contains many, many specific coral and essential fish habitats. The reddish area, pinkish area, the coral area, is all benthic material that is critical to the survival of all the species that live in the, in the waters. I know a lot of this is going to be technical and maybe not very interesting to everybody, so we'll leave that alone. We have a large area, it's one of the largest Hope Spots in the world. Now, let's see. I think that's.
Do it one more time.
There we go.
So when I first learned about the Hope Spot and I first made contact with Ray, or actually, you made contact with me, I was really excited about it. I may be biased because I have a background in biology, but it was something that I see as really shedding a lot of light to our area, and I also think it, it really aligns with the city's goals. So specifically, the Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot aligns with the city's comprehensive plan that calls for the preservation of living and non-living coastal zones. The, the Hope Spot will encourage this type of preservation through public outreach and school events, through restoration and cleanup activities of our coastal areas, by encouraging data gathering and sharing to support research, by enabling information sharing among, among research organizations and other stakeholders, and promoting sustainable initiatives such as sustainable commercial and recreational fishing, improving water quality, and increasing clean energy. Ray, could you actually? Ray, could you actually click one more on the slide for me? We can show that one. There we go.
Oh, sorry. Can I go back, or is that okay?
Let's see here.
I put up that little sign.
That is, one more. And click one more time. Perfect. So the Florida Gulf Coast Hope Spot will also align with the city's strategic mission to facilitate development of the economy and support a high quality of life and experience. So the Hope Spot can support this by attracting marine scientists to the region to conduct research and hold conventions, by supporting Clearwater Beach as a potential ecotourist destination, and increasing environmental awareness among the region's residents. So I know that there was a lot of discuss, discussion earlier, and I think that the Hope Spot is a great potential for attracting more people downtown, and that it'll encourage a scientific body that we might not currently be attracting to the region to hold conventions and share research. So that's one possibility that I see already aligning with the city. And as you can see as well, there was a large degree of community support for this designation. The Hope Spot supports our environment, our recreational opportunities for residents, our draw for visitors, our beach-based businesses, and who we are as a community. So with that, I would like to thank you for listening and open discussion about the Hope Spot, as well as the potential resolution in support of the Hope Spot that you have before you this morning.
Council, any questions?
I did, but you answered them.
So, no other questions?
No questions.
All right. We do lots of, of beach cleanups. We have volunteers that come out, you know, service groups. Other than that particular program, what other programs are you envisioning that we're going to ask people to participate in?
We have educational, educational programs that we're initiating right now through Blue Green Connections. We have people that are lining up to go into schools and teach kids about the importance of our waters. This is one of our big goals for Blue Green, is to create an educational outreach to the public. We have a girl in Tarpon Springs called Paige. Her family owns the Tarpon Springs Aquarium. She has a YouTube channel called Paige's Planet. She goes into the schools and she teaches kids about marine life and different scientific things like that.
So, so have we gone to the school board and asked them to also?
We're in the process of connecting with them at this time, and we have good response right now. We just don't have a program set in place for that, but it's being developed as we're...
Okay. And then you mentioned the oysters, and, you know, being from Tarpon, I remember going off of, of our old pier there, scalloping. Are we doing anything along those lines to help bring back, you know, to, to the area?
There's a lot of work being done right now, both through Moat Marine, Tampa Bay Estuary Program, has great programs that are set up. Obviously, okay, I will read one little statement from Ed Sherwood, who's the Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Estuary Program. He says, "The recent designation of the Florida Gulf Coast as a Mission Blue Hope Spot is a true win for our region. Globally significant coastal ecosystems such as oysters, seagrass, mangrove, salt marshes, freshwater springs, and wetlands, important to both the environmental and economic quality of our region, will benefit greatly." One of the things that happened in the growth of our population here after the boom of the, the invention of air conditioning was the boom here. We had a lot of effluents that were going into the waters. From 1950 to the late seventies, early eighties, we lost 90% of the seagrasses in the Tampa Bay area due to, you know, poor systems that were set up for cleaning our waste. Now that has all been regenerated, and we are above the 1950 levels on our seagrass. Unfortunately, and as I can remember as well, our scallops have not done very well up in this area. We've got scalloping north of here in Pasco and Hernando, but we're trying to develop ways to repopulate these scallops in this area. We don't understand quite why yet, but there are, there's a lot of research being done to, to help find that out.
So this would, would help in, in that regard?
Absolutely. We're bringing in scientists from around the world. The International Union of Conservation of Nature are sending scientists here to help Moat and other great facilities, including hopefully Clearwater Marine, Marine Aquarium, to help study these. They all have great programs going on. They need a little extra assistance. And Mission Blue, because it's an international entity, has the ability to bring scientists here to help with the people who have already initiated the work. Florida Aquarium just announced that they have created a way to recreate almost every coral in the world, which is amazing. This is going to hopefully save our coral reefs. Over 50% of the coral reefs in the world are now decimated. And when I started diving in 1978, there was very little damage in the area all over the state and Caribbean. Now, most of those coral reefs have been decimated for various reasons.
We, we would be remiss if we didn't ask a question about red tide. How does this impact the red tide?
Well, haha, that's a question that is difficult to answer. Red tide is not created by human interference. It's created offshore, and it wells up in the shelf. It moves inland because of wind and wave action. And when it reaches the runoff of, say, fertilizers and things like that caused by man, it accelerates its growth, and that's when it becomes even more harmful. But we've had harder blooms. We've had bigger blooms, like, say, for instance, in 1500, there was a red tide bloom that scientists can somehow understand what years these things happened. It was bigger than the red tide episode we had last year and the year before. So we're having a little bit of trouble understanding what causes red tide to come in when it does and the, and the numbers that it does, but the agencies that are studying this have, you know, good work being done. So becoming a supporter, giving us a support, isn't going to change the red tide yet. Hopefully, the additional scientific information that can be gained by, by, you know, having scientists here will, will find a solution.
So what else do you need from us?
I would just like to discuss that we've, we've all seen here how if the city supports this designation, it's a, it's an alignment of what we're both trying to achieve, and if we would support the resolution.
So you need to bring us the resolution back, because we don't have one in our pocket.
Oh, okay. I will do that, and can, can I do it at this upcoming?
Oh, wait, wait, wait. There is, there is a resolution. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
What does support mean?
I'm sorry?
There, there will be no financial ask. In fact, we hope to...
Section two says, the City of Clearwater supports the, the goal, and I'm assuming that doesn't mean financial support.
No, there will be no financial support. Mission Blue can hopefully help our supporters create financial means to help the efforts in their areas.
Do y'all want this on the agenda for Wednesday night, or do y'all prefer that we wait until the following meeting?
Put it on there.
Are we okay? All right.
Thank you.
Wednesday night.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Mayor, I, I can't resist this. When you mentioned red tide...
Sir?
About 12 years ago, Parks and Recreation, we contracted with a, a theater company who came and, and did a play out on Island Estates. And the play was centered around why we experienced the scourge of red tide. And the reason was our, it was, it was punishment for our inhumanity to man. That was the theme. It was, no one understood the play.
Yeah.
But I just couldn't resist telling you.
Nothing to do with communism.
No, had nothing to do with communism.
4.1.
Declare surplus for the purpose of donation for development of affordable housing. Real property located at 1304 North Madison Avenue, together with vacated right-of-way per City Ordinance 9327-19. Approve the real property donation agreement between the city and Habitat for Humanity at Pinellas County Inc., and allow the appropriate officials to execute same, together with all other instruments required to effect closing. Mr. Lane.
Thank you, Chuck Lane, Economic Development and Housing Department. This is a lot in North Greenwood we took title to through foreclosure of a code name. It lies in the southeast corner of Tangerine Street and North Madison Avenue. It's a large vacant lot. It's just over 10,000 square feet. The square footage actually would allow for two single-family homes, but it's really only feasible for one. If approved, Habitat for Humanity will build a six-bedroom home on the site to an income qualifying homeowner. I'll take questions, please.
Six-bedroom?
Six-bedroom.
Wow. Any ques-, other questions? All right. We'll have it on our agenda Wednesday night. And again, to remind everybody, our meeting will be on Wednesday, October the 16th, at 6:00. Agenda item 4.2.
Approve a local government contribution of $747,000 in general fund reserves to be set aside as a commitment for the minimum local government areas of opportunity funding that is required for Blue Sky Communities to receive a basis boost in the state of Florida's low-income housing tax credit program for an 81-unit affordable housing development project at 610 Franklin Street. Approve section 15.18 and 15.21 of the development agreement between the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Clearwater and Blue Sky Communities LLC, Blue Sky, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Lane, again.
This item is related to the item discussed at the CRA meeting earlier this morning. This development proposal is under a program administered by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. This contribution represents local government support, support of Blue Sky's Communities Project. Local government support is required for any developer to submit an application for this program with Florida Housing Finance. The amount of the contribution will provide for the maximum basis boost for when the applications are ranked. This will give Blue Sky the best chance in submitting a successful application. The staff recommendation includes the approval of paragraphs 15.18 and 15.21 of the developer agreement between the CRA and Blue Sky. While the city is not a, a party to this agreement, these paragraphs do commit the city to this contribution. Contribution will be in the form of a 4% interest-bearing loan, amortized over 20 years. The item sets aside general fund reserves for the commitment. However, the contribution will be comprised of home investment partnership program funds from HUD and CRA funds. General funds will not be used. I'll take questions, please.
Any questions on 4.2?
I think my question is answered.
Okay. Consent?
Yes.
And if Mr. Pogly or Hamilton want to have it pulled, we can pull it on Wednesday night. Agenda item 5.1.
Approve a draw request in the amount of $2,648,244.15 from the SunTrust Master Lease Purchase Agreement, 10481 line of credit to reimburse expenditures for equipment as listed in Exhibit A. Authorize the city's finance director to approve future draw requests on the credit line and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Veriker.
Morning, Mayor, Council. Clem Veriker, Finance Department. This agenda item is requesting the approval for a $2.6 million draw on our credit line established by the Master Lease Purchase Agreement with SunTrust Equipment Finance and Leasing, and to authorize the city's finance director to approve and execute future draws. Be happy to answer.
Any questions on 5.1?
I'm just, sir, am I assuming correctly, this has to do with what we voted on a month ago, or a couple of weeks ago, on the purchase of equipment, leasing of new, new vehicles?
I'm not familiar with that item, but all the equipment that is financed through this agreement is previously approved by the council for purchases for automobiles, fire trucks, major equipment purchases. We just finance it over like, generally a five-year term with this, with these draws at very attractive interest rates. This particular draw is just slightly over 2% for five years.
That's what I needed to know. Thanks.
Consent? I'm sorry, Ms. Aiken?
This master agreement was approved back in January of this year. So you approved the master agreement, January 14th.
I do.
You've seen it before.
Consent?
Yes.
5.2.
Authorize the piggyback of state of Florida contract number 84121500-1501, purchasing card program with Bank of America for the term of October 2019 through December 2020, pursuant to Clearwater Code of Ordinances, Ordinances, Section 2.5641D, other government entities bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Ms. Bench.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Alice Bench, Procurement Manager. Since 2009, the city has been a member of the Hillsborough County Procurement Card Program Consortium. As lead agency, Hillsborough County managed the contract with Bank of America. Early this year, Hillsborough County made the decision to not rebid the contract, and they moved to the state of Florida contract. We have explored other piggyback options that are available to us, and I'm recommending council's authorization to utilize the state of Florida contract for the city's peak card program. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions on agenda item 5.2? Consent?
Yes.
Thank you.
6.1.
Accept a natural gas easement over, under, across, and through a portion of property conveyed by Marina Del Rey, whose principal address is 1571 Gulf Boulevard, Clearwater, given in consideration a receipt of $1 and the benefits to be derived therefrom. Mr. Langill.
Good morning, Brian Langill, Assistant Director for Clearwater Gas System. This is an easement that will allow us to serve a customer that's located at 101 Marina Del Rey Court. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on 6.1? Consent?
Yes.
Thanks. 7.1.
Approve an agreement between the City of Clearwater and Redflex Traffic Systems Inc. for a traffic camera safety improvement program through October 30th, 2024, in accordance with Clearwater Code of Ordinance, Section 2.5641D, other government entities bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same.
Good morning, Chief Sire of the Police Department. In April 2011, the council directed the police department to implement a red light camera safety program. That program went live in the summer of 2012 after an RFP process selected Redflex as the vendor to support that program. The red light camera enforcement was deployed at three approaches at two intersections. That would be Chestnut and Fort Harrison eastbound, and Belcher and Gulf Bay eastbound and westbound. The contract with Redflex is set, set to expire at the end of this month, on October 31st, and the department is recommending the city continue a contract with Redflex due to the positive experience we've had with them, and after reviewing the price competitively solicited and obtained through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. The financials associated with this proposed contract are same as the expiring contract, and the terms are substantially the same. The cost to utilize the enforcement technology is $4,278, $4,270 per approach per month. It includes language on cost neutrality, so if the fines associated with the program do not cover the costs over the life of the contract, the city is not responsible for the payments to Redflex. The city can terminate the contract within 90 days' notice, or if there's a change in the laws that repeal the red light camera statute authority. In 2018, the program generated 17,694 notice of violations. The violation rate is approximately 0.09%, and that's of the 19.4 million vehicles that go through these approaches each year. A cursory view of the crash rated, crash data shows that the crashes at these approach had been trending down, but I would be cautious before I would make any type of correlation to reductions or increases in crash data just because of the nature of so many variables. Belcher and 60 and Chestnut Fort Harrison were selected by traffic engineering because of serious injury crash data attributed to red light violations, and Belcher and 60 remains an intersection that is a higher rate of crash, crashes than any other intersection in Clearwater. And so we definitely believe in doing everything we can to try to make that intersection as safe as possible, and I'd be more than happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions of staff on agenda item 7.1? Mr. Albrecht.
So I had a chance to read through the compensation and pricing guide, and so let me understand this, because I think you just explained it. We have a $4,270 fee associated with each approach. So we have four approaches?
Three.
Okay.
Eastbound, westbound at Belcher and 60, and then east...
Oh, that's right. And only one at Fort Harrison and Chestnut. I guess my first question would be, I understand the traffic at Belcher is dangerous. How is, how are we doing at Fort Harrison and Chestnut?
I provided some crash data. It is trending down. It, the, the crashes aren't, it's a one-way intersection, so there's a little less complexity. So the, the crashes aren't nearly as high as Belcher and 60. But as indicated before, it was selected from traffic engineering based on that, that previous serious injury data. The, good thing about the data is it, it doesn't necessarily, I looked at Keene and Gulf Bay as kind of a control group, and that had been trending in an opposite direction as the two approaches, or the two intersections where we have red light camera data. You know, your, your question is difficult to answer because the, you know, how do you look at that data? What would be the empirical data that you're looking for in answer on that? Is it just number and volumes of crashes or percentage of crashes?
I use Fort Harrison and Chestnut a lot, because... I use Fort Harrison and Chestnut a lot, because I come from the beach, and I notice that even when I slow down, like to make a right-hand turn, I'll see a flash, because it's early in the morning, it's like, really? I didn't even cross the street, but I, you know, never get anything in the mail. But it seems like it goes off an awful lot when violations aren't, you know, really happening.
Yeah, I could, I could research that with the vendor to try to figure out what the answer is. The, the technology calculates from the speed of the vehicle a lot of variables, and it kind of determines if a potential, because to get the picture, you have to anticipate that there may be a violation. And so the technology, based on the speed of the vehicle, kind of makes, uses an algorithm to determine whether or not it thinks the car is going to violate, in which it, it may not. So the flash could be going off because the technology thinks the violation could potentially be occurring.
I'll try to slow down a little bit.
Could be that. Sometimes it's, like, we, the council directed us not to enforce right turn on reds, and so it also may be anticipating that there's vehicles making that right turn on red that are rolling, and maybe the technology is still taking the picture, but then weeding it out through the rules.
Okay, so my other question is, my last question.
Let me interrupt there, though, okay?
Yes, sir.
So that people don't think that you're getting off because you are a council member. Explain what happens when you get the picture, chief?
Yeah, so once the technology identifies a violation, Redflex sends them to our traffic enforcement employee. They review them, they determine whether or not a notice of violation is to go out. We don't screen them for council members or any person's affiliation. They all go out. I have officers that have paid the tickets, too. It's happened. So, so that doesn't occur. The notice of violation goes out, you have 60 days to either handle the violation or to nominate somebody that was driving your vehicle. If you don't do that, then you'll receive a uniform traffic citation, which is a higher fine than what you would have if you would have satisfied the red light violation.
So somebody reviews the photograph, a live Clearwater officer reviews the photograph before it's sent out?
Yeah, a Clearwater Police Department employee reviews everyone at the time. They review the video and the pictures and verify the information on violation.
I just want to be clear, that I do stop, that I may wait, you know, coming to a kind of an abrupt stop, so. But my question is this, and I think you answered it. So we have the $4270 a month, and the traffic fees go against that? Is that correct? I mean, if there's a lot of fees, then we really don't pay as much as that.
If there aren't enough fees to cover that, then we don't pay anything, but it's done on a contractual period. But, so yeah, and we, the fees generally, it's not a problem covering that expense.
Really?
We generate, it's enough fees to cover that. Even though, it's because of the volume. I mean, you're talking about 19.4 million vehicles. Our compliance rate is 99.9%, so .1% violators is still 17,400 violations, which is more than substantial to cover the expenses.
Thank you for explaining that.
Ms. Kinda?
I can also attest that council members don't get a pass on it. When I got mine, I was going 20 miles an hour through the intersection along with two or three other cars. I'm assuming they got hit, too, but I paid my fine. My question is, does traffic engineering still recommend these intersections as being critical in?
They, they have not suggested any changes. Belcher and 60 continues to be obviously a focal point, but yeah, they have not suggested any changes.
Chief, you did bring up, though, Keene and Gulf to Bay?
You looked at Keene and Gulf to Bay as kind of a control group, for lack of a better word. There's a lot of debate when you look at these red light cameras, sometimes with the rear-end crashes. And so rear-end crashes are about 30% of all traffic crashes nationwide at our intersections, but, but that's all areas. At intersections, I suspect there would be a much higher number. I just don't have a nationally recognized number for that. So we were in the 50% for rear-end, the percentage of crashes at Belcher and, and at Fort Harrison, kind of in those numbers. So I looked at Keene to kind of just use as a control group, and it was right around parity. So it didn't appear that the red light cameras had changed anything.
Okay. Counsel, I want to ask that this be taken off consent and just have it, you know, on the agenda for Wednesday night.
Discussion.
Okay. 7.2?
Renew grant and financial assistance agreement between the Florida Department of Law Enforcement and the City of Clearwater to facilitate a current mutual aid agreement between the two entities effective upon execution through June 30th, 2020, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Chief Flot again.
So this is related to the council's previously approved, the department's participation in the Florida Department of Law Enforcement Task Force for the Electronic Surveillance, Electronic Surveillance Support Team. This agreement is required to be done annually by FDLE and the State of Florida so that we can be reimbursed for up to $12,500 worth of expenses of overtime or training expenses related to this participation.
Any questions on 7.2? Consent?
Yes.
8.1?
Accept an underground communications easement containing two easement areas, a 34-foot easement and a 50-foot easement from Duke Energy Florida LLC for the construction, installation, and maintenance of underground communication facilities on real property located in Duke Energy right away west of Spectrum Field, and adopt the appropriate resolutions. Mr. Berzak.
Good morning, Robert Berzak, Real Estate Services Coordinator. The proposed easement will provide the city with property rights necessary for the construction, installation, and maintenance of city fiber lines with an easement that will support the new city transfer station and fill its copper or complex at Spectrum Field.
Any questions on 8.1? Consent?
Yep.
But it can't go on consent. That was a test.
Oh, it's a, it's a-
Right, so it will be on the agenda for Wednesday night. 8.2?
Approve the First Amendment to the, to that certain contract for sale of real property by the City of Clearwater, Florida, between the City of Clearwater and Equity Lifestyle Properties Inc., and authorize the appropriate officials to execute saying. Mr. Berzak.
The city and Equity Lifestyle Properties entered into a contract for sale of city's Hillsborough County Keystone property on November 20th, 2018. The contract provided an opportunity for the parties to identify certain pre-existing conditions relating to the city's prior use of the property. During their inspection period, no conditions were identified by mutual agreement. For purpose of clarification, the parties now wish to amend section 20 of the agreement to reflect that the inspection period as identified, or excuse me, as defined in the contract has passed where no such conditions being identified. The remainder of the provisions as written shall remain intact. Questions?
Any questions of staff on 8.2? So we still, we haven't gotten rid of this property?
Not yet. Moving towards closing.
Okay. But this will bring it closer to fruition?
We're on, we're on track to close December 7th.
Okay. Consent?
Yes.
9.1?
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
We need to pull this one off of consent.
Which one?
The one, the 8.2. We don't have the signed agreement yet, and until we get the signed agreement, I won't allow it on consent.
Okay.
So it needs to come off.
So the, 8.2 will be on our agenda for Wednesday night?
Yes, sir, thank you.
9.1?
Thank you.
Authorize the recording of a lien for a total cost of $27,444.24 on the property located at 401 North Garden Avenue, Clearwater, Florida, which has a legal description of the west one half of Lot 11, Block 2, Hart's addition to Clearwater, according to the map or plat thereof as recorded in Plat Book 1, page 94, of the public records of Hillsborough County, Florida, of which Pinellas County was formerly a part and whose owner is J-Pac LLC, and adopt the appropriate resolution. Mr. Root? Is this your first time?
Yes, it is.
Be nice to Dana.
Good, good morning. My name is Dana Root. I'm the Assistant Billing Official for the City of Clearwater and the Planning and Development Department. This, this property at 401 North Garden was declared as an unsafe structure by the billing official. The property owner did not bring the structure into compliance, so the billing official ordered the demolition of the structure. And I can go through some photos if you'd like. Yes, no?
Any questions of staff on 9.1?
So the building has been demolished?
Yes, it has.
All right, and that's why we see all the grass.
Mr. Albritton?
So in the photo, well, I guess the third photo, page four, did he just sod the lot? Looks like just, it looks like all-new sodding there.
Yes, this is what, this is what the property looks like right now on Google Street View or if you walk by it. So the building's gone, slab's gone, and it's sodded.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
To be clear, sir, what the agenda item requests is a resolution allowing us to recoup the $27,000 in demo cost that it took to take the building from the 2016 photo to that.
It's to put a lien on the property?
Exactly.
Was the sodding part of our contract?
Yes.
But, but until the property owner sells the property, the lien?
The lien will resolve on there. It's something that we could potentially foreclose. There's things of that nature.
This has gone on for three years, almost four years now, right?
The property was cited April 2016.
16.
And final demo was January of this year.
2019.
Yes.
Okay. All right, this will be on our agenda Wednesday night. 9.2?
Deny amendments to the Clearwater Community Development Code to expand the geographical area within the Regional Center Subdistrict of the US-19 district, where self-storage warehouses are currently allowed on a limited number of parcels to allow the use on certain parcels, 1.1 to 1.2 acres in area with frontage on Seville Boulevard, and do not pass the specific ordinance 9308-19 on first reading. Ms. Matzke?
Good morning, Lauren Matzke, Planning and Development. The item before you is an amendment to the Community Development Code that was generated by a property owner on US-19. This is unusual, because this is the second time the city has received a request from an applicant to amend the US-19 district within one year. The code allows an applicant to propose a text amendment, provided they submit a development application in conjunction with the amendment. The applicant met this requirement. However, the Development Review Committee determined that revisions are required to meet the US-19 district and development standards outside of this proposed amendment, so some redesign will be required. This proposed text amendment relates to the permitted uses within the US-19 district. The applicant is requesting to change the code because they would like to construct a self-storage warehouse on a property where it is not currently permitted. Text amendments are not uncommon, but they are typically initiated by the city council or the community development coordinator, and therefore they are usually written to be consistent with the standards for review for text amendments outlined within the code. I've already explained that the code requires the applicants to submit a development application in conjunction with the request to amend the code. This is required so they can demonstrate the need for the amendment and their ability to meet the code. But the standards for review in section 4-601, which apply to text amendments, are limited to, first, whether the proposed amendment is consistent with and furthers the goals of and objectives of the comprehensive plan, and, second, whether the proposed amendment furthers the purposes of this development code and other city ordinances and actions designed to implement the plan. I wanted to highlight that for you because that is the basis for Planning and Development's recommendation of denial for this application. As you know, the city has spent a lot of time and money studying and planning for the redevelopment of US-19. Table 1 in the staff report summarizes that, so I won't go into the detail today. The culmination of the city's work occurred in 2017 when city council adopted the US-19 zoning district and development standards and rezoned the entire corridor to this new district, which established three sub-districts and distinctive objectives, development potential, and uses, based on the US-19 corridor redevelopment plan and the countywide rules. The result was a streamlined approval process for projects that meet the development standards and limited flexibility for certain standards to ensure development is meeting all the objectives of these plans. The applicant is proposing to revise the use in parking table within the US-19 district to expand the area where self-storage warehouse is allowed as a flexible standard use in the regional center sub-district. First, the proposed language limits self-storage warehouse to parcels 1.1 acres to 1.2 acres in size, fronting Seville Boulevard that existed on or before June 3rd, 2019. Only one parcel meets the standard, which is the property the applicant has under contract at 2611 Seville Boulevard. Self-storage warehouse uses in this expanded area would also be required to have 100% of the ground floor frontage and a minimum of 20% of the total ground floor area occupied by retail, restaurant, and/or office uses not associated with the self-storage warehouse use. This provision is consistent with the amendment processed last year. The proposed amendment would require access to all storage units from the building interior and would prohibit outdoor storage. This is also consistent with the amendment process last year. The same standards are included in this, this year in an attempt to address or mitigate the inconsistencies with the city's plans and code inherent in the self-storage warehouse use. Staff recommends denial of this application because the self-storage warehouse use is inconsistent with and in direct conflict with the goals and objectives of many city plans. So expanding it would be inconsistent with those plans, including Clearwater Green Print, the city's Economic Development Strategic Plan, the Clearwater Comprehensive Plan, and the Community Development Code. As I outlined at the start, this is the criteria against which staff is to review text amendments. The criteria for text amendments do not include whether the subject parcel is challenging to develop, or if the proposed site plan will result in a nice-looking building. Staff acknowledges that the subject site is not without its challenges, but the criteria don't include that because text amendments are not usually used to address an individual property. Rather, text amendments typically make changes district-wide or to regulations that apply citywide. I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss the process the applicant is using to request council's approval for the use on an, on an individual site. I don't know why I'm nervous for the first time in ages. The subject property is shown here on this map. This is the Clearwater Mall Regional Center that's depicted in the dark blue area. This is one of two regional centers in the US-19 district. Is it showing yet?
It's not showing.
You need to move the map up a little, too. We did that there. So this is the Clearwater Mall Regional Center, and the subject property is outlined there at the southern portion. The corridor sub-district, a second sub-district in US-19, is the gold area which immediately abuts the subject property. Because the US-19 district is unique within the city, it includes its own division in the code for administration. Section B-802 addresses amending districts and frontage types, including amendments to the underlying future land use designation of a property. This is the process the applicant should have proposed or utilized for this subject property. Staff has concerns that property owners are utilizing the text amendment process to give development rights to individual properties that others do not have. At this time, self-storage warehouse is the only use in the code that is written in this manner because of the amendment approved last year, and the proposed amendment expands that to one additional property. The proposed amendment affects one property, that's 1.13 acres, out of the 660 properties located within the Regional Center Subdistrict on a very specific street, Seville Boulevard. The amendment applies to .12% of the 914.55 acres of land in the Regional Center Subdistrict. The subject property is only a tiny portion of the Regional Center, but that does not mean that this application is insignificant. Approval of this application would result in an unfair advantage for one property owner over all others, both in the Regional Center, where a use is only allowed on this site, as well as in the corridor sub-district, where the use is already allowed, but at a lower intensity of development. Giving development rights to one parcel within a zoning district does not meet the general purpose of the Community Development Code, which is in, which is in part to guide the orderly growth and development of the city through the establishment of reasonable standards. Changing the code is a shorter process than amending the future land use map, but these actions erode the district as a whole. Through the planning process, appropriate uses for each sub-district were defined and incorporated when the US-19 zoning district and development standards were adopted. The planning process and the code itself provides certainty for property owners, the development community, and residents regarding the city's vision and expectations for future development in these defined areas. Making changes to uses on a parcel-by-parcel basis undermines the code and creates uncertainty for these same groups. Had the applicant requested the map amendment, which was the appropriate legislative process by which to make this request, the self-storage warehouse would have been allowed on the property. It would have taken a few additional months, and would, and it would have been- It would have taken a few additional months, and it would have been at a lesser intensity than what is permitted in the Regional Center. The Planning and Development Department is recommending denial of the application before you today, based on the criteria for text amendments in the code. But additionally, we disagree with the utilization of the text amendment application as a pathway to providing rights to individual properties within the city. The Community Development Board echoed these concerns with the applicant's choice and process and recommended denial by a vote of five to two at its meeting. And with that, I can answer questions.
Catch your breath.
I'm trying.
Yeah, this is the first time that you seemed nervous.
Yeah.
Any questions of staff on five on nine point two? Mr. Kundal.
I'm just wondering what the alternative is for the applicant if this is denied. Is it just a dead issue then? Two questions, actually.
The code limits what can be applied for, and I'm going to look at Gina for this one because I don't remember the timeframes, but I think they could provide an alternate application for the land use plan amendment because that is a different application for this property. As you see where the subject property is, it does abut the corridor subdistrict both to the east and to the south. You know, it's likely that they could make a... that it would meet all the criteria within the Community Development Code for future land use map amendment. The underlying land use map amendment would need to be amended to the corridor land use, which would go through that process. A rezoning is not required because the entire US-19 corridor is the US-19 district. But we would... staff would process a text amendment, actually, to change it on the maps which are located within the code.
I would like to say we advised the applicant that that was the appropriate process to pursue when they came in to meet with us, and then I believe they decided that this was a shorter route, and it also gave them additional development rights, and that's the reason why they went this route instead of the more appropriate plan amendment route.
If I can ask a second question. I'm all in favor of community standards and what you have developed. My concern is with small properties like this that... and you have already said that this is quite a difficult property to... what I don't think we... any of us want is for properties to stay undeveloped year after year after year. And does the system that we have now work for those type of properties? Someone can come with a plan and get it passed without undo...
I think the goal in this instance is you see that it abuts a parcel that abuts the frontage of US-19. I think the long-term goal is to see some consolidation of properties and those smaller properties that may be a little more difficult to develop, and that is why this parcel was included in the center because it had redevelopment options with parcels adjacent to it with frontage on US-19. So I think that that's common in any sort of redevelopment scenario where a small parcel on its own... you've seen it on Clearwater Beach for years, where people have consolidated property to make them large enough to redevelop with, you know, new hotels and condominiums. And I think maybe the market is just not quite as strong yet on US-19, and, you know, people obviously are in a hurry to want to see some benefits, but sometimes these redevelopment goals take a little bit of time.
Mr. Horrigan.
I have kind of the same concerns because I know the other text amendment that was brought forward was on another piece of... kind of weird piece of property that the neighbors didn't have any intent to develop and take in, so it would just stay there, you know, probably for 20 years. I mean, it's... and then I look at the time element going, "Well, this could do the same thing if the 7-Eleven front of it decides to..." I don't know if that's... has any... I mean, that's been there a long time, and I think that's going to stay. I don't think they have any use to absorb this property. The concern I have is, okay, you want to do an office there or something, but you've got a 30-foot easement that goes right through the middle of it. I mean, it kind of restricts the... what you can do on it. So to me, it's a... you know, it's something that could be useful, that would go in, that the community could use. I don't know about the... you know, you say that the process was wrong, you know, they should have gone in for a map amendment instead of a text amendment. The text amendment affects what, one other piece of property?
The text amendment is written to solely affect or...
That one piece. Okay, so it doesn't affect any other... it's just, you know, it seems like... I understand your concern because we have two text amendments on storage properties within a year, you know.
I think we've had maybe a total of two or three other text amendments put forward by the private sector applicants in the 20 years that I've been here. So it is definitely not a common practice, and when it's been utilized... I think Lauren did some research. It applied to the districts as a whole in which those were located. I think, you know, when you think about the small size of this property, they're proposing 900 storage units on this small piece of property that has a, you know, a major easement that runs through it. It's not a... you know, it's not a small insignificant development. This...
Well, but the parking requirements for storage limit the size of the parking lot, which if this was some other building, it would have to be, you know, it would have to be a lot more parking. I think that's the advantage of that smaller area, but I don't know. I'm not the one developing it, but I just wish there was a flexible process in this that, you know, maybe we didn't have to go through text amendments to do this. But maybe it's just not what you want to see there, so...
I think we're all struggling, you know, on this one, but it's one... I think I was one of the two that voted against the last one. I'm still very uncomfortable with the... the Community Development Board said no, right?
Their recommendation.
They recommended no. And I think I heard you say that there was another way that the developer could get to the end product. He just didn't want to go that way because it was going to take two or three months longer?
It would take a couple of months longer. Additionally, the development potential would be less. The corridor subdistrict is limited to a 1.5 floor area ratio, whereas the Regional Center is a 2.5 floor area ratio, so...
So that would mean there would be fewer storage units?
It would be a smaller building.
If they had come forward following that process, would it have gone to the Community Development Board?
Yes, sir.
Would staff have recommended approval or denial, or you're not willing to... you're not sure yet?
Well, I think it's fair to say we didn't have the application in front of us, so we didn't go through the analysis. I think that if you look at the map, there's some... I'm sure there's some cases to be made to support such a plan amendment, but without going through the analysis...
Right, yeah. No, I... it was sort of a kind of an unfair question, but it's something that, you know, is weighing on me because if they could have gone this other route and had your support, you know, okay, it would have been a little less. It is an awkward property. There is some constraints there, but again, how many times are we going to be asked to change, you know... I mean, this is the second one within a year, right? And that's my... you know, that was my concern the last time. That's my concern this time. You know, every time we do this, I'm wondering, you know, I wonder, does it mean that we're going to get another request? And that defeats the whole purpose of what we had staff do earlier. Okay, well, this will be on our agenda for Wednesday night, and we appreciate your being with us on that evening for this discussion. I'm sure it will be heated. Nine point three.
Approve the annexation initial...
Oh, wait, excuse me, Mr. Horrigan. Let's take a recess for until 11:10. Okay. Edge of noise. Now, I just got a note from the marina that I'm sending you. It's too early. I said 11:10. Like to recon... I can't reconvene. Hold on a second. Our clocks aren't synchronized with the TV. Like to reconvene the work session for October the 14th and remind everybody that our meeting will be on Wednesday, October the 16th. Our clocks here aren't in sync with the television. That's why we weren't quite ready when the TV came back on. Agenda item nine point three, Mr. Horn.
Thank you, Mayor. Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of Industrial Limited and initial zoning atlas designation of Industrial Research and Technology District for 2108 Palmetto Street, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading.
Thank you, Cal Brotherton, Planning and Development. So this voluntary annexation petition involves a 0.895 acre property consisting of one parcel of land which is currently occupied by a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive solid waste service from the city, and they would like to utilize this property in conjunction with the parcel to the east, which is also owned by the applicant. In this case, sanitary sewer is not readily available to the property, so they will not be connecting.
Any questions of staff on agenda item nine point three? Be on our agenda for Wednesday night. Nine point four.
Approve the annexation initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 1421 West Virginia Lane, and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Guevara.
Moren Diego Guevara from Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves one parcel of land totaling 1... totaling 0.19 acre occupied by a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting the annexation in order to receive solid waste service from the city. The property continues to exceed existing city limits west, and they propose that the property be assigned a future land use map designation of residential... property be assigned a future land use map designation of residential low and zoning atlas designations of low-medium density residential.
Any questions on 9.4? It will be on our agenda for Wednesday night, October the 16th. Agenda item 9.5.
Approve the annexation, initial future land use map designation of residential low and initial zoning atlas designation of low-medium density residential district for 1861 East Drive and pass the appropriate ordinances on first reading. Mr. Brotherton.
Thank you, Cal Brotherton, Planning and Development. This voluntary annexation petition involves 0.206 acres of property consisting of one parcel of land which is occupied by a single-family dwelling. The applicant is requesting annexation in order to receive solid waste and sanitary sewer service from the city. Close to sanitary sewer line is located within the adjacent East Drive right-of-way, and the applicant has paid the required impact and assessment fees and is aware of additional costs to extend service to the property, and solid waste will be provided upon annexation.
Any questions on 9.5? Mr. Kundav.
Thank you. Are the other properties on, in this development, south of East Drive, for example, on south of, are they already in the city, or is it all unincorporated?
So for the most part, East Drive is mostly in the city. This, it looks like this subdivision is mostly within the city. There are a few, one on East Drive and a few on West Drive that are still unincorporated.
So, so the dotted is the unincorporated, yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
This will be on our agenda then on Wednesday night. 10.1.
Authorize the piggyback of City of St. Petersburg contract for security cameras, installation, maintenance, and repairs to GSA Security, Inc. of Tampa, Florida, in the amount of $400,000 for the three-year term expiring on June 24th, 2022 pursuant to Cloridico Code of Ordinance Section, exceptions to bid other government entities' bids and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, Council, this is a continuation of our support of our milestone system that manages our cameras and other security features across the city's network. Any questions?
Any questions of staff on 10.1? Consent?
Yep.
10.2.
Authorize piggyback of Florida State contract EMS 101100HC for basic cellular smartphones and mobile data services with Verizon Wireless in an amount not to exceed $690,000 for the period October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020 pursuant to Cloridico Code of Ordinance Section 2.5641D, other government entities' bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Mayor again.
Yeah, this is for all our cellular service, both data and smartphone. They've increased over the last several years. Are there any questions?
Any questions of staff on 10.2? Mr. Albritton.
Is that hardware included, or is that just the?
Yeah, we get a, we get a substantial discount on the hardware. Most of our phones are a dollar.
Okay.
What kind of service is this going to be, Mr. Mayor?
In terms of cellular?
4G, 5G?
Whatever they offer, we, it's, it's, it's across the network when they do it. They have spots of 5G coming up across the Bay Area. It is one of the early-end metropolitan areas because of its topography and broad usership, so we're starting to see it in spots.
Okay. Consent?
Yep.
10.3.
Authorize piggyback of Florida State contract EMS 08/09071 for Suncom long-distance service, state AIN Centrenet lines, and toll-free lines in an amount not to exceed $134,200 for the period October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020 pursuant to Cloridico Code of Ordinance Section 2.5641D, other government entities' bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Mayor.
These lines are used primarily for alarm systems, fax machines, and single-use facilities where we don't have large numbers of staff.
Any questions of staff on 10.3? Consent?
Yes, thank you.
11.1.
Approve docking agreement between the City of Clearwater and the San Pearl Resort, LLC, for the shared docking facility located adjacent to the Beach Recreation Center and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Chesney.
Chesney, Marina, and Aviation. This agreement is an amendment, not an amendment, a modification to a 2007 agreement with the resort. Back in 2007, when the docks were built, both the city and the state believed that they owned the bottom lands. Sometime around 2017, it was discovered that we did not own the bottom lands, and we entered into a temporary use agreement with the state until we could figure out and properly permit the facility. The next item will be that actual land lease with the state. The city's the adjacent property owner, and we have 15 public docks that are there. The agreement modifications don't change much other than to now talk about the lease, but the, the resort is responsible for all maintenance to the docks and repairs. The city inspects them regularly. Any deficiencies, we report to them, and they have been very diligent over the years in doing those repairs. The docks are widely used, and a big asset to the, the city and my department is responsible to make sure that the, the agreement and the lease is in place.
Questions of staff on 11.1? Ms. Aiken, what's the difference between a modification and an amendment?
Since the agreement had lapsed, we're simply redoing the agreement.
Gotcha. Consent?
Yep.
11.2.
Ratify and confirm submerged land lease between the State of Florida and the City of Clearwater for the shared docking facility adjacent to the Beach Recreation Center and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Chesney.
This is the lease I was talking about. The reason it's a mod, ratify and confirm is because we've already paid the lease, and we've been paying through our temporary use agreement to maintain status of, of the facility. So the lease was approved, they asked for payment back in June, we made that payment. It took a while for us to get the agreement modified, so now we're going to bring them together. They'll run on the same five-year cycle, expiring the same, which makes it easier for us to track.
So, any questions on this? It'll be on our agenda Wednesday night. Thanks. 12.1.
Authorize establishment of a new capital improvement project, see 2005 NORD, underground refuse program and project purchases for a total budget amount of $1,570,090, which includes construction management and risk services from Biltmore Construction Company, Inc. in the amount of $650,500, a truck chassis from Kenworth of Central Florida in the amount of $235,000, $214,000, and NORC underground refuse systems in the amount of $470,139, all in accordance with Cloridico Code of Ordinance Section 2.5641D, other government entities' bids, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Gloucester.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Earl Gloucester, Director of Solid Waste General Services. The item before you is the underground refuse project, which I've spoken to you about. We plan to, and if approved, we're planning to install these at the beach accesses across the street from Mandalay Park, on Mandalay Avenue, on the sidewalk near the Hilton Hotel, and with the approval of the Phillies want it set at Spectrum Field. These are underground refuse units that will be serviced via a truck. What it is, we're a lot, we, we will put three sets along McKay, across from McKay Park. There are five cubic yard units that will be placed underground with a container on top for folks to be able to use, deposit their garbage and recycling. There are basically two kiosks, a garbage can and a recycling container for public space recycling. We'll service that with a truck that we're proposing to purchase from NORC Underground Systems. It's a specialized vehicle with a crane and a compactor body. The truck chassis will be an autocar chassis, which we currently use and we can purchase from the sheriff's contract. These units will actually aesthetic, besides being aesthetically pleasing, they'll give us some efficiency in being able to not have to service those areas for garbage as many times as we do, especially during the high season, with just the current garbage cans that we use or wire baskets that we use. With five cubic yards, we'll be able to place that underground out of sight. It won't be a nuisance with birds getting into it and that thing, that sort of thing with birds and, also just won't look ugly until we can get back into servicing. So with that, we're asking you for the three things here, to be able to use Biltmore Construction, Construction Manager at Risk, to construct a project for us, to be able to purchase the autocar truck, and also the equipment, the truck body, crane, and the containers through NORC Refuge Systems. With that, I'll answer any questions.
And equ, Mr. Albritton.
Yeah, it's a nice system, but I was wondering, how long does it take to Biltmore to put that in? Is that?
It's approximately a week per kiosk, so.
Okay.
A week per installation.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Kundav.
I was wondering if the cost, 1.5, 2.5, is that already in your budget?
Yes, we're taking, it's not in our budget, we're taking that from reserves to be refunded.
From the solid?
From the solid waste reserves, yes, sir.
The vendor, I believe, had said something about donating one of the?
Yes, sir. One, one of the kiosks will, the one proposed to be placed at Spectrum Field is being donated by the vendor, underground refuse, in consent.
And, and help us explain again, we're going to put the refuge in, because it's not going to be blowing all over the place, and it's not going to be unsightly, but explain how, do you have a, a drawing or something?
I'm sorry, I didn't bring my visual aid with me. I didn't bring my visual aid with me today. But what it is, it's a, it's a container on top, foot, it's used by, via foot pedal. Push the foot pedal down, it opens up, you toss your refuse in and walk away.
Okay. And then the truck is going to come and lift the whole container out of the ground?
The truck comes and lifts the container out of the ground, drops it into, inside the truck, places it back in the ground. While, as the truck lifts it, there's a platform that comes up, so you don't have a hole there that somebody could fall in. So a platform comes up, it empties into, to the truck, comes back, back on top of the platform and back in, into the ground.
You, you answered my questions, thank you.
All right, sir.
Okay. Consent?
Yes.
And again, all these items that we're putting on consent, if Mr. Polglaz or Mr. Hamilton want to pull on Wednesday night, or anybody from the public will do it. 12.2.
Approve the purchase of HVAC replacement and repair parts for an annual not-to-exceed amount of $350,000 for fiscal year 1920 to vendors as listed, in accordance with Cloridico Code of Ordinance Section 2.5641D, other government entities bid to include other source vendors as required, and authorize the appropriate officials to, to execute same. Mr. YQ.
Morning, Tom YQ, Billy of Maintenance Superintendent. This authorization consolidates the, to utilize property source, piggyback contracts, and/or sole-source manufacturers and distributors, not limited to the following: Tampa Bay Train, Florida Cooling and Supply, Johnstone Supply, United Refrigeration, and RE Michael Company. Staff recommends approval.
Any questions on 12.2? Consent?
Yes. Thank you.
12.3.
Authorize the award of invitation to bid number 47-19, police vehicle upfitting services to Enforcement One, Inc. of Osmarth, Florida, in the annual not-to-exceed amount of $300,000 to include two one-year renewal terms at the city's option, and authorize the appropriate officials to execute same. Mr. Johnson.
Morning, this is Mayor and Council, Brian Johnson, Assistant Director of Solid Waste General Services. The item before you provides for the upfitting of police vehicles scheduled for procurement in this coming fiscal year, FY '20, as well as for costs associated with damage or totaled police vehicles. Enforcement One, Inc. was the most responsive bidder and has been selected for your consideration. Funds are budgeted in Garage Services. Staff recommends approval of this item and are available for questions.
Any questions on 12.3? Consent?
Yep.
13.1 is the second reading. Any questions on 13.1? Mr. Horn, do you have anything further for us?
No, Mayor, I do not.
Ms. Aiken.
No, sir, thank you.
Okay. 16.1, Mr. Kundav.
Yes, I was hoping Mr. Polglaz was going to be here, so we could ask him, since we're not going to be there, to attend the North Greenwood Community Fund Night, which is the 26th of October, and it is a fun night for all who goes. So I'm, if it's all right with you, I'll ask him privately if he would attend on our behalf.
Okay.
Doesn't mean he has to.
Any other business?
That's it.
We remind everybody that our meeting is Wednesday at 6 o'clock. We are adjourned.